And discussing bylaws and talk about low-impact development. Before she starts, could we just go around the room, introduce yourself, and tell Danica what position you hold in the town other than stormwater committee? Bill, you want to start?
I'm junior building commissioner.
Thomas Wires, Board of Health.
I'm building stormwater agent.
Nancy Block, representing the Board of Selectmen. And we have one resident, Mr. Carr, in the audience today. Danica, if you would like to start, tell us a little about yourself.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone. I am Danica Warrens. I work for Mass Audubon, and I am the regional coordinator for a program called Shaping the Future of Your Community, which I'll talk about a little more in a moment. Let me start sharing my screen so you can see the presentation. Okay, so everyone can see that all right, right? And I will turn my screen this way so you can see. I know it's going to be kind of small. Can folks on Zoom hear me okay if I talk like this, just so others can see my presentation?
No problem.
Okay. Okay. So quickly, I'm going to start off just by introducing myself and the others on the line.
You can see that there.
Thank you. So I'm going to introduce myself and the project and what we're doing. And then I'll give you a little overview of the results of the bylaw review that Nancy mentioned that I did for Dayton, and what the recommendations are, and kind of like what the next steps are. And then I hope we can have time for a little bit of discussion to get everybody's feedback. So I work for Mass Audubon. Mass Audubon is a nonprofit organization that works in Massachusetts to protect the nature of Massachusetts for people and wildlife. We do that through our series of sanctuaries that we have across the state. And I specifically work for a program called Shaping the Future of Your Community, which works with municipal staff to help plan for a more sustainable future. And I am also here on behalf of the Resilient Taunton Watershed Network, which works, it's a group of local, state, nonprofit groups that are working in the Taunton watershed to help promote resiliency throughout the watershed. And we are, we're 20 groups, but there are like four main groups that are the main coordinators of this watershed. And those four groups are all part of this project that I'm presenting to you today on. And those are Serped, Manimate, the Nature Conservancy, and then myself from Mass Audubon. So also on the line, we have Bill Napolitano, who's from Serped, and Eric Wahlberg from Manimate. And he's going to talk a little bit later on about some of the recommendations that I'm sharing. And just wanted to point out that they're also part of this project team that we all worked together on this effort. So the project was funded by a 2018 SNAP Watershed Grant. SNAP is the Southeast New England Program. It's a program of the EPA. So they gave us money to work on a project, working on community resilience throughout the Taunton watershed. And one component of that project involved bylaw review for Dayton, as well as Berkeley and Treetown, where we are taking kind of a comprehensive look at all of the local bylaws, how they function, how they work together, to see if they're promoting more sustainable types of development, like low-impact development, and promoting the use of nature-based solutions to manage stormwater and things like that. So I did meet with you guys. We met as a group last October, which seems like a lifetime ago now. And from that meeting, we did identify some kind of priorities that all of you wanted to work on. And those included developing an open space network, and particularly with a network of hiking trails. That is a priority for the town, as well as improving communications between the different boards to handle like development requests and permits. And then also the housing developments that have been developing kind of in a sprawling fashion. And low-impact development is a technique that can be used to address a lot of those issues, particularly with sprawl. So it's a good thing that we're all talking. And in that previous meeting, I did talk a lot about, or it wasn't me, it was Heidi who presented at the last meeting, but she talked to you all about the bylaw review and the importance of low-impact development. And because we were kind of crunched for time, I'm not really going to talk much about that today. But in the files that I have for you that I'll pass over to the other computer, there are more resources about it and a series of fact sheets about different low-impact development techniques. So what I really want to focus on today is what I did and what the results and the recommendations are. So quickly, the bylaw review, it's really just a way to look through your local regulations and laws and make sure that they are encouraging the type of development and practices that you want to see happen in your town, and also making sure that they're all working together. So say, for instance, I know you guys have adopted a more recent stormwater bylaw, which is great, but if you don't have the chance to really kind of look at how it works with all of your other more like outdated bylaws, that can run into issues for you. So it's really just looking at the whole system and seeing how everything's working together. And how I did that is by reviewing everything and comparing it to what the best practices are. And I've made recommendations based on that. And so we have five goals that the tool, so I used a tool that Mass Audubon has that I'll show you in a moment, and it's also available on our website, that is a process for you to walk through each of your local bylaws and regulations and see how the language within yours matches to what the conventional language would be and what the best practice would be. And the goals that we have in mind for this tool are: one, are we protecting natural resources and open space? Two, are we promoting efficient, compact development patterns and infill? So that kind of avoids some of the spreading outward and sprawling residential developments and subdivisions. And then smart designs that reduce overall imperviousness. We want to try to avoid surfaces that rainwater can't soak into, and that can cause flooding issues. So instead, we want as much rainfall as possible to be able to soak into the ground and recharge the groundwater. And then also, the fourth goal is to adopt green infrastructure, stormwater management provisions, which is a way of addressing stormwater in addition to reducing imperviousness, how to address stormwater management. And then lastly, to encourage more efficient parking, which helps to reduce imperviousness. And this is what the tool looks like. So it's a series of rows, and it's broken down into those five goals that I just spoke about. And then on the left side, you'll see these columns are filled in and they're colored. So those are examples of what the conventional language would be, what's a better example of what a better regulation would be, and then the green is what the best practice is. So pretty much what I did is I looked through all of your local bylaws and regulations. And for each question, filled in, what language in yours addresses each of these questions? And then the end result, which I have the full file that I can share with you to look at, is you have this kind of color-coded matrix that shows you where in your bylaws are you reflecting like the more conventional practices and which ones are more in line with these low-impact development practices. So here's what I looked at. I looked at the zoning bylaw. And in particular, I paid a lot of attention to your conservation subdivision bylaw section and the site plan review. I also looked at the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land and your stormwater bylaw and the regulations, and then your general bylaw. So that's everything that I analyzed in my analysis. And I filled out that chart. And then I filled out that recommendations report that is kind of like the summary of what I found and what my recommendations are. So a few things, let's get into now what I found and the recommendations. A few things that I found that are working well are, first off, that you have this stormwater committee here that meets regularly, and you have a good representation from the different boards and commissions of the town. Your conservation subdivision option in the bylaw, that is a good option. I will talk about ways that you can make improvements to that in a moment. But also, you have pretty good erosion control requirements across in the site plan review and the subdivision regulations that minimize disturbance and whatnot. So that's something that's great, and we want to encourage. Also, you have the overlay districts, like the mixed use and the village overlay district that are encouraging more infill. That's really important because it can help giving more flexibility in the types of residential development that happen in those already developed areas really helps with building up as opposed to out and increasing density where things are already developed. So you're having less of an impact on the not-developed land. So that's something that's really great. Also, the Water Resource Protection Overlay District that focuses on, it calls out, it makes the connection between imperviousness and how that impacts water quality. So that's a strength for the town. And also, the outreach and education that you guys are doing about better stormwater practices and things like, in the permit, I noticed that you have all the like brochures and informational materials that go out with permit applications to really raise awareness of like what the best practices are. So those are all great things. So I just want to start off by pointing out some of those positive things. And then, so where can we do better? I'm going to focus now on the, in the report, if you want to look. It's the zoning. Maybe, do you have another copy that I can look at? Yeah, thank you, just so I can point you guys where to look on it so I don't have to take away from the presentation. So on the third page, under zoning subdivision, site plan review and stormwater analysis. So in here, I go over the positive points that I just spoke about and how to maybe make improvements in some spots. But I also outline what some of the recommendations are. So in here, some of like the more straightforward main things are to, like I said, reducing imperviousness wherever possible. So reducing the minimum like lot size and setback requirements for building lots to just decrease the footprint of development and encourage more compact development. And then also, reducing the amount, like having minimum road widths. Like you could reduce your road width. They're a little wider. You guys, I will say that in a lot of instances, you're better than the conventional, but... Sorry? Yeah? But there's just always room for improvement to get to that best practice, to make the road widths minimum. And you guys have different like categories of roads that have different road sizes, which is better than just like a blanket. Every road has to be that width. So that's something that you guys definitely have going for you. But even within those categories, the widths can be minimized a little more. Also, requiring bituminous concrete all across for all streets and sidewalks. If you were allowed to allow flexibility and using their different types of pervious pavers for, maybe not for roads, but for driveways and sidewalks and things that, or roads that have smaller traffic, like that's always an option to encourage more groundwater recharge and avoid flooding issues. What else is in here? For the overlay districts, allowing, you do allow flexibility, but allowing even more flexibility. In most instances, the type of residential development is limited to whatever the underlying district allows to allow a little more flexibility by right. Then that could help to encourage even more infill. In general, low-impact development is mentioned in the stormwater bylaw, but it's not really called out as a priority in any of the other bylaws or regulations. By calling that out and just focusing on, like just calling that out as the preferred method of development and maybe listing examples of what, like what types of low-impact development would be good, that would be a good way to encourage more adoption of those practices. A lot of towns, even though they're encouraging low impact, they want to encourage low-impact development, there are some regulations that kind of prevent people from implementing in every instance. So for one example, and Dayton has this, is the continuous curbing requirements on all streets. If someone wanted to put in like a roadside swale or rain garden or something to allow some of the stormwater from the street to drain into that garden or swale as opposed to going into the stormwater system, then that could help alleviate flooding issues. However, if you require consistent curbing on all roads, there's no way for the water to flow from the road into that roadside system. So if you were to make a minor change to that regulation to allow curb cuts by right as opposed to buy a special permit, then it would make it easier for someone to install a rain garden or swale on the side of the road. So like, things like that. And I'm not going to go into every single detail because it's all in this report here. But in general, just looking at ways that you can make it easier. Because most developers, if something is by, like for open drainage, for example, is allowed on road sides by special permit. If you were to make it by right, then developers, it's making, kind of like removing all the obstacles for developers to do something as opposed to if they have to do a special permit, that's an extra step for them that most maybe wouldn't want to do. If there are any opportunities where you can make more of those types of decisions, the by right option, that they don't have to take that extra step, like just little things like that can make a big difference. What else is on this list? Another thing is native species. There's not really any mention of planting with specific native species. There are a lot of regulations that require landscaping with, oftentimes it says like appropriate to the area or like, I forget what the wording is, but it doesn't specify native species. And the thing about native species is that you want to encourage using native plants whenever possible because they are suited for this climate, which means that they don't need as much maintenance. They don't need to be regularly watered because they were, they evolved to handle the specific like levels of rainfall that we see here, for example. So the more you use native species, the less you have to rely on maintenance and watering in particular, and that can save time, money, effort. And also, it can help with, if you're using like a rain garden or something to manage rainfall, using the local native species always helps to improve efficiency for that. And then, so another thing we spoke about the last time we met was that even though you guys have this committee gathered to review development plans, not every plan always makes it to you, or maybe doesn't make it to you soon enough. So if you, if, writing it into the regulations, like in the site plan review and in the subdivision rules and regs, if you call out the stormwater committee specifically as like a necessary reviewer. So for site plan review, there are different boards that have to review every plan. And I know a lot of those boards sit on this committee, but maybe not. It's a specific person is going to look at it who sits on this committee. Maybe it's not someone who's like specifically stormwater-minded. So if you were to specify within those regulations that this stormwater committee should be a required reviewer, especially early on in the process. Like I know in site plan review, there's an option to do like a pre-permit submission review where you kind of discuss preliminary plans. And if you guys were to meet with the developer from the very start, like before they have these like high-level plans for the site, to talk about the stormwater issues and different ways to address it, that could help to improve because, so it's not after the fact when the plans are already developed. Yeah, do you want to say something, Nancy?
Yeah, we have instituted that. Obviously, the existing regulations, whatever department you're looking at, whatever board, don't say that. But we are actually practicing that. As a matter of fact, we're in discussion right now with a lodge proposed FODI B development that's called Strawberry Fields. And so the stormwater committee has been actively involved. We met with the developer and his representatives. And pretty much now, zoning board, planning board, they know ahead of time, and we have a checklist of all the committees and people who might be involved in something. And if something comes down with it that you're not involved in, then you don't have to sign off. But there must be something built in on every one of these lines, either not applicable to this committee or the fact that they've met and there's a sign up. So we have instituted that to be able to participate in all of these. The FODI B housing is the most recent one. But of course, Aggie School, North Campus, that's a real biggie. And we've been involved with that right from the beginning. And we have a soil farm down off of Hill Street that came before us. And we will have, I'll call it an agricultural soil farm that's going to have to be with us. So the various boards and commissions, our way of, that any of this kind of development has to do with stormwater. As I say, it just says in the regulations yet, but we have instituted that.
Okay, that's great. Is there a plan to actually like codify that into the regulations?
One of the things we've got to do is we'll get all of the regulations and rules because we have a soil board that was constituted, I think, in the 80s. Well, we didn't have a stormwater committee and all of those other committees. And what we found is there seems to be clumps of regulations that are all sort of related, and it needs to be brought together. So we've talked about doing that, and that would be the most likely place to bring it all together. That FODI B that I mentioned, there happened to be two sections that were planning board assigned. But the stormwater committee was able to weigh in on that through the zoning board, even though it wasn't, if you will, sections specifically relative to stormwater bylaws. But because a couple of members of those committees that we need to weigh in on that, CBAs agree. And after our meeting today, I'm going to get back to them with feedback. But so I would say that we are doing it. And yes, eventually, all of this needs to be put together.
Okay, great, thank you. The other thing, do you guys have enabled chapter 43D permitting here that you know of? No? Okay. Do you know what the opposition was?
Change. Actually, the project was located in a densely populated area. So they just didn't want to enable it.
What is that specific?
So it's a, you can identify in the town like priority development areas. Areas, and then you can enable, it's like a statewide legislation that towns can choose to adopt that would streamline permitting for development projects that happen within those like predetermined areas.
So just to...
Is that segregation?
No, so what we would do is we would get all the boards and committees together. We would identify the projects. Let's say it's a big box store, just for all of us sake. We'd say, okay, what involves doing the big box store? What can we do to streamline permitting process for the big box store that they commit? Are there things that we can do to identify sites? Maybe almost like a pre-permitting or a pre-discussion? That way, when they come in, it's condensed and the permits fall out much quicker. So.
They should have spoken, right?
I think it was six months. I may have taken that.
Application to commit was six months.
So, yeah, there wasn't much interest in it.
Is that planning board?
Yes.
So having something like that is just, it's something that we recommend to kind of streamline planning. So if you're in your master plan, if you identify priority areas for development, which I think Dayton has in their master plan. And you can also, on the opposite end, prioritize areas for protection. It's just a way to kind of guide developers to develop in the areas that you want to see development and away from areas where you don't want to see development. And then, if you have identified priority areas for protection, then that can help you with, if you have, like say, someone wants to donate money for land protection, but they don't have a specific piece of land in mind, like something like that. And we'll talk a little bit more about land protection in a moment. So I won't go more into that. But that's just a potential option for kind of just planning to help guide development in the way that you, your town wants to see it.
Yeah, we developed a new priority protection plan. I was involved with that idea more than I guess now.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Priority protection plan.
Yeah.
Priority protection plan, I believe it's a plan we developed a few years ago.
Well, we've got, years ago, we appointed a town land committee. And the purpose of that was to identify all the land, make a list, and then talk about what was the best use for. And we set up a number of categories. And I think now it's called the, is it the town, town use, town land committee? But we have since sold off some of that land because it was either landlocked or was not something we felt was valuable to keep. But we've also acquired a number of properties that have been added to it, some of it through conservation, some of it through the CPC program. We, probably the latest, I'll call it the latest piece of protected land that we acquired is on Burke Street, and it's a little over two acres. And it contains Weston Hodge, we said, Reddance River, and the water rights that go with it. So that land obviously will never be developed, although it has frontage from Bruce Street. But that would be, that would be the latest protected property. So I would say, for the most part, the land that's on this list is protected, per se. Some of it is designated, we have now a trails committee, so they only can be added for recreational purposes. And they'll be looking at the Brook Street land for recreation and things like that. But obviously it is protected, so.
The other thing is the conservation commission has been buying up land for years. We're pretty much exhausted due to a fudge. You're pretty much out right now, right? Yeah, yeah. But they've, they've been instrumental in buying up land, especially along the Tawt River. They have quite a bit of land that's been bought, so we commend them for that.
That's great.
Oh, and that's right. Conservation, you've got the property at the Somerset line, right? That was CPC money, was it? Was that it? It was your money? Okay, so we own, we own almost all of Ridgeway.
Right.
And our land about what Somerset owns, so obviously there would never be development, but it certainly is a protected area. So that's, that's also something.
Okay. Okay, and so while we're on the topic of land protection, a good mechanism is the conservation subdivision regulation that you guys have. So that's a good way, by having this option to, right now, it's a special permit option that developers have the option to do, where when they create a subdivision, set aside a certain percentage of that subdivision for protected open space and focus development in a smaller section of the sub-development subdivision. And we would recommend to make that the by right option. Right now, it's by special permit only. Again, we want to encourage removing barriers to developers to do this type of development. And also the current, the minimum number required for open space in Dayton's conservation subdivision is twenty percent. And the state recommended amount is fifty to ninety percent. So it would be more effective if you could increase the, the minimum requirement. Also, so the, the state has a smart growth toolkit that has a model bylaw specifically for conservation subdivision. Theirs is called Open Space Design or Natural Resource Protection Zoning. It's different words, but it all means the same thing. And theirs is a really good model to follow. And yours does kind of follow theirs, but it's just more vague. It doesn't include all of like the step-by-step process that the state recommends for how to select how many lots go on the subdivision and how to choose which areas protected and which areas developed. They have a really good formula for calculating those things that we like to recommend towns to adopt. And also calling out low-impact development in the, the bylaw to encourage developers, if they're doing a conservation subdivision, saying that you should or must adopt low-impact development practices wherever feasible, that would help to promote better development. And another option is density bonuses, where you could allow developers, if they include, it's flexible on how you do it, but say if you want to see like elderly housing or low-income housing, if a developer includes a certain number of units, they get bonuses where they can include additional units, then maybe they would otherwise have been able to include within that subdivision. And that encourages more, just more of that like infill idea, kind of avoiding the sprawl and protecting more open space. And having something like this is so powerful for a town because the town does not have to pay to protect that land. The developer, the land ends up being protected. You could do like through a conservation restriction or something. And there are flexible ways in how you can handle like who would own the land and who would manage it. But it essentially is getting protected open space without the town having to purchase it. So it's a really powerful mechanism if you can get more towns to adopt it. So at this point, I think I'm going to hand it over to Eric, I hope you're still here Eric, to talk about the Green Infrastructure Network map, which kind of identifies the, it's a way, I know you guys have priority protection, areas for protection, as you, you mentioned, but it might be worth revisiting those priority areas using this map that Eric is going to talk about. Are you still here Eric?
I am. How, how are you going to handle the audio?
Oh, sorry, I have my volume down. Okay, go ahead Eric.
Okay, is that going to be audible?
Yes, wait one second, sorry. Go ahead Nancy.
I don't want to cut anybody short, but you're at the beginning of the agenda and we've got a lot of agenda. We had roughly twenty minutes for the whole presentation.
Okay, this is the-
If you want to work against the time, right?
Okay, these are, thank you for pointing that. These are the last of the recommendations. And Eric, I don't know if you heard Nancy, but we are short on time, so try to go through these quickly, as quickly as you can. Is that okay?
Sure, sure. And Eric, thank you for the opportunity. Eric Wahlberg, I'm senior program leader for Climate Services with Manomet. And as, as Danica mentioned, I'm, I'm part of the team that's been working on this project. So Danica, if you could go to the next slide, please. All right, so as a group, we've worked to do a regional analysis of conservation priorities for the entire Taunton watershed. And subsequent to that, Mass Audubon has taken the same approach and expanded it statewide. So we've now got this analysis available for the entire state, which bodes well. Just to give you a very quick overview, we used three different inputs to this. Nature Conservancy's Regional Landscape Initiative, which looks at resiliency under climate change. We used the biomap two as an input, which I assume you're familiar with. And then we also looked at areas that are adjacent to riparian systems, flood plains, et cetera, with an eye towards flood control. And so what you see here is those three inputs and then the aggregate map on the right. So next slide, please. All right, so what we'd like to spend a little bit of time on, and it was interesting to hear your conversation about the work that you've done so far on open space protection. But what we've got in mind is an approach that would be a melding of the regional work that we've done and integrating that with local planning priorities. So what we're suggesting is that our regional work be used as a jumping off point for development of a local map. And you can see on the right here, a clip of, of what the Green Infrastructure Network would look like for Dayton. And we've differentiated a couple of different color codes. And Danica, please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong about the color coding in the state version of this, but I believe the darker areas are in play and the lighter green areas are already protected. Does that fit with the statewide analysis, Danica?
The, sorry, the darker color green here is what's protected and the light green is protected.
Oh, the light green is in play. Okay, all right. Okay, so next slide, please. All right, so what we're suggesting then is a, a clip of, of regional network and then overlaying that with the types of priorities that you guys were discussing earlier. So that could be existing protected open space, so that you've got that on the map, future conservation priority areas, protection of water supplies, zoning, and, and any other local priorities that you feel are pertinent. And, and what we're really after here is a, a situation where a rising tide lifts all boats, you know? In, in our regional analysis, what we're looking at is sort of a, a very efficient approach to protecting biodiversity, maximizing flood control and protection of, of drinking water supplies on, on the broader landscape. And we feel that if, if localities can take at least some of those elements and incorporate that in local planning, it's just going to be more effective across the board. So next slide, please. All right, so this is a zoom in of, of what that Green Infrastructure Map looks like for Dayton. I'm not going to go through this in detail due to lack of time, but a, a number of the attributes that accrue are shown over on the left. And this ties very much to some of the comments that Danica had made previously. So next slide, please. All right, so assuming that you go down this road and this is an appealing approach to you, how would you then knit that in with your local development controls? So probably the best single opportunity is integration with the Open Space Plan. And as you know, the Open Space Plan references regional priorities. So section one and section three A is where you could create that linkage. And then dropping down further into the details of the plan. And section four, section eight, section nine would be an opportunity to introduce the local version of the map that I alluded to earlier and start to link it up with your local priorities. And so in the conservation ledger, this would create a situation where we've now got a melding of, of the local and regional priorities. So next slide, please. And then to link this up with the open space subdivision discussion that Danica led earlier, the other element, you could really see some benefit now, is that if you've got this map articulated and included in your open space plan, you could also reference it in your open space subdivision work. And so now dedication of open space helps to build out and protect the, the Green Infrastructure Network. And the beauty of this is that rather than ending up with essentially random open space as land gets subdivided over time, you're actually building the network. In situations where subdivided land actually overlaps the network, you could have onsite open space dedication. In situations where there is no overlap, you can use a, a transfer of development rights program to make sure that that open space protection actually helps build out the network. So I know that was very fast to come through. Hopefully that keeps everything on track time-wise. Happy to take any questions if you got them.
Any questions? Thanks Eric.
All righty.
Thank you.
And I will just say that I'm leaving you with this report, which I didn't mention at the start, but the report I sent to you is still considered a draft and I'm welcome. If anyone wants to, has questions, wants to make recommendations, suggestions, please feel free to send those comments back to me before I finalize this. And if you have any questions about anything that we spoke about, you can always reach out to me and I can get answers for you. So obviously this is a very general overview and you might have additional questions when you start adopting some of these changes if you wish to. And there are plenty of resources out there that I can help point you in the direction of. So the what next here, this is all things that we've all pretty much spoken about. Again, I want to bring your attention to the, the state's Smart Growth, Smart Energy Toolkit. And then the rest of my presentation, which I sent to Rosalind, and I'll give you a file now, had just resources and where you can find them about some of these changes, about low-impact development. Did I bring last time we met these low-impact development fact sheets? Okay, great. That's awesome. I did not bring any today because I have not been at my office since like pre-COVID, so. But they're available online and the link is here. And also at the end of this report, I have additional notes, other considerations. And then the last couple pages have resource links that you can go to for these fact sheets. And more, again, I'm not going to go through all of these slides, but it has links in here to where you can find information about. Mass Audubon has our Losing Ground Report series where we talk about development trends. So I pulled some of the statistics for Dayton specifically that shows the, that you can access online. And if you go to massaudubon.org/losingground, you can look like by town, by watershed, by county. So I pulled some of the statistics for development and protection in Dayton and how it ranks against the rest of the state. So you can take a look at that. And more links for stormwater finance. I know that was something that you had mentioned the last time we met about financing and paying for some of the maintenance of stormwater infrastructure. So these are links to that. And I also wanted to mention the, the SNEP network is the, the Southeast New England Program. They have a network of stormwater professionals from across New England. Yeah, oh, the story, okay, so I was going to mention that there was like a Green Infrastructure Introduction Training that is recorded. It's on their website, if you go to snetnetwork.org. They have upcoming webinars, so there's another, there's a Green Infrastructure Design one on July thirty-first. That's coming up. It's two hours or three hours?
Yeah.
It's nine to twelve. Yeah, so they have a lot of resources on their website. They have, all their webinars, webinars are recorded and posted on the website. And they also have opportunities to provide assistance. So if you guys do decide to go down the road of doing these updates and you're looking for support, if you want help to find out more way, more information about financing stormwater maintenance, if you want to set up like a stormwater enterprise or something like that, they have this annual call for participants where you can request services and they'll work with you like one-on-one and provide free services. So it likely will be released in the spring, next spring. I will, I'm more than happy when it's released to forward it to you and, and give you a heads up. But if you're on their list already, that's great. I would encourage you to apply for those services if that's something you're interested in.
I think the next step for our committee will be, we have a bylaw committee that the board has selected. We just made a couple of appointments and I think we're still looking for a couple of people. So between the bylaw committee, the open space committee, the trails committee, the zoning board, and, and probably planning, because Storm sits on that one. I think we'll probably pass this information on, ask them to take a look at it and, you know, get back to us. We'll, I guess we'll act as the collection agency. That way, we can get information to you or we can contact you if we need further assistance. So, so rather than all these people trying to get in touch with you, and if any want to have a presentation or something, we can let you know that too. You know, that would zero in on some of the work they do, so.
Yeah, that sounds great.
But anyhow, I think that's probably the next thing we'll have to do to get it moving, okay?
Okay. Thank you everyone. Thank you Eric and Bill.
Thanks Phil, thanks Eric.
Thanks guys. Take care.
Take care.
Thank you. Bye.